I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. First item, I have no opening remarks. Joe, do you have anything?
Just a few things, just to, so everybody knows what they have in front of them. You have some spreadsheets in front of you. If you want to just keep them out and put them in the, in behind the department folders at the end, or if you want to put them in there now, that's fine. Ron and Jack were printing these off. So these have all the departments that will be presenting tonight, the elementary schools, curriculum instruction, IT and facilities. So that's, that's that packet. Paul also gave you an updated executive summary that could go in the front of the IT department section.
Which one is that? Oh, is it this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that says executive summary on it. I think there was a, might have been like one number change in there, so Paul changed it, and that's reflected here. And then I also, I know Jeff had asked at the last meeting, I emailed to all of you the Malone and McBroom presentation that you guys, that we participated in last year. So that was sent to all of you. I printed off the last, I think like seven pages or so, from pages, or nine pages, from pages 35 to 44, that had the projections on there that they were using at the time, and they were using that media model. So, you know, that had a lot of those projections. If you, one of the things I thought was interesting, when you look at that model, they, they project us, like, right now, we're at 32, 3,215 students without the outplaced school students. And if you look at this projection, that puts us at about where they were projecting us around, you know, 2024, 25. So I know Jeff had asked for this, and I sent out the whole report, and Jeff, you were looking at the, at some of the housing data?
So if you look at, go through the housing data, and I was just going off of the numbers that I see as a realtor in Shaniken. Feel free to jump in here, but the projections that we're currently in right now for this year's housing market, if you go on those numbers, we're up in that high category if you go off of this study. So we'll see how it shakes out, but, you know, we're right now, we're up 17%, 15, 15, 17%, which puts us pretty close to that 20% projection number that they had on the high end. Now, again, this is just this year, and we'll see if it levels off, but, you know, if it stays like this, I think student population, the numbers will be way off.
Thanks, Jeff.
And is, are some of the houses, like the Woffley you have tonight, is there family leaving? Like, are there kids leaving and new ones coming in, or is it just like new, just addition of kids?
I mean, what I have seen is it's, it's more people transitioning out or, you know, going down something smaller because their kids are out.
So they're empty nesters?
Me too. That sounds like empty nesters.
Yeah, so it's not like where we, it's not like some kids are moving out and new kids are moving in. It's a complete addition because there are empty nesters going and kids are moving into those places.
That's just what I'm seeing, which that's what sounds like we're both seeing.
No, that's important to know.
Yeah. I mean, it's not like they have that kind of information on the envelope or you can say what percent. Is there anything like as far as that goes, but that's just, you know, what's, what's, what we're seeing.
All right, so when, so, yeah, so that's important to know. 17% up. That's huge. And what have you been normally seeing every year?
Well, if you go back when this study was done, I mean, we were, you know, we had, we'd been increasing slightly, like, with 3% to 5% ranges, you know, since the collapse of the real estate market.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've rebounded, but this is far beyond what, you know.
And Jeff is talking about percent sales of the town in Monroe.
Yeah.
Like, we don't have any data available to us that's telling us like how many kids are there or anything like that.
Right, right.
So he's just talking about sales overall for the town.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's what you're, I, I just, we're char.
And we always follow, Joe, right, the media model, right?
That's the one I think that we have been.
And where, what's our number right now?
Right now, without the outplace students, which I think would make that kind of apples to apples with that, we're at 3215.
3215.
So if you look at that, that's 2024, 25 projection.
Yeah, so, and now, mind you, this study was only done last November.
Yeah.
A year ago.
Yep.
And it is way off.
Yep, yeah.
Then the only other thing I have is the updated Q and A sheet. This is just a continuation from the, this is the update from where we left off last time. I did, at the end of it, I did update, the first question was about the Malone and McBroom study, I brought that in. And the second one was the, is the, I know Alan had asked about where other towns came in over their 10-year average. So I continue to get that in, so as I get it in, I'm just adding to this little table that I put in down below. I think right before I came here, I got one in from Greenwich as well. So these are the ones, these are the people, folks that have responded. If they didn't have a 10-year average, like, you'll notice Bethel's was a seven-year average, that's just what she had. So I compared that to the same seven years in a row.
Wow, question 23. We're still obligated for Honeywell until 2023? When did that start?
I think it was 10, I think it was 10 years.
10 years, wow. I thought when Dave asked me that question this morning, I thought, oh, it's like almost over. I think it may even be over.
And that's a payment, Ron, to Honeywell?
It's a payment.
It is. It's a lease.
So if you want to take a minute and look at the questions, if anyone had any additional questions on those before we...
Donna, you wanted to add one thing to the 10-year rolling averages. Except for Fairfield, which the RT, I'm forgetting, it's far away. Except for Fairfield, where the RTM votes in the budget, the other six, the other 1, 2, 3, 4 towns, including Monroe, are referendum.
Oh, are they?
So we are really, except for Fairfield, comparing apples to apples. Because in towns where the legislative body adopts the budget, or the fiscal authority in some, you get some wacky percentages. But these are the people voting.
In these towns?
In all of these towns except for Fairfield, where Fairfield, the RTM, adopts the budget. And actually, in Newtown, in Newtown and in Region 15, the budget referendums are bifurcated. So like, in those towns, it's a yes, no on the town budget, and it's, and a yes, no on the CLEB budget, which would be the, I think, the death knell. Because in Newtown, you could go once on the town budget, you go six times on the Board of Ed budget. So this is with, at least, I don't know about Bethel and Brookville, but I know for a fact that Newtown, Region 15, the referendums are bifurcated, so these are people voting yes just on the Board of Ed budget.
Joe?
Yes, thank you.
Just to address my, my question number 20, and I don't want to get into anything legally that we can't talk about in a public meeting, but the Fairchild Wheeler settlement.
Mm-hmm.
When you hear back from that attorney, I'm very interested in making payments on that, so that we're not paying the 197.1 lump. And I would like to recommend to this board that we cut that line item by at least $150,000 and make payments to Bridgeport, if we can legally do that. And then you and Ron can recalculate that, because I think that'll help. My theory with that.
All right. Is there any questions do you feel that would be, you know, that we should make? You know, like, I know we're seeing it and we're reading it, but the public is not knowing what these questions are, because this is a rolling document for us. Are there any that? And some are just like, like question 21, that is just a housekeeping thing.
Yep.
It doesn't really change anything. It's, you know, is there anything ones that you, that everybody feels that should be talked about so that the...
The number two chart should be on our website. I, I think that's interesting for the public.
Oh, number two chart? Agreed.
The, I did make these, these, this sheet quite, um...
Public on the website?
Public on the, on the agenda, so if you have access to the agenda, it's a link right on there. So anyone who has access to the agenda can click right on that and have access to the Q and A sheet.
Okay, great. Hey, George, how are you?
Hello.
We're just getting started. We're just kind of going over some of the additional question and answer stuff that was added since last time. If we maybe can also, like, put this on the website, the Board of Education website, with the budget documents, it may be helpful for people.
Well, yeah, good spot.
You know, so that they can access it. Because probably not everybody goes to look for the agenda, but if it's with all the budget documents, that'd be great. Does anybody have anything else before we go into public participation and get into the budget? The other thing we talked about, George, was the enrollment study.
Mm-hmm.
And where we are right now with our enrollment is what we were told in this study that was done last year. We're at what we're at, where we, they said we would be for the 2024, 25 budget. And Jeff was also talking about that right now, just with home sales, that's up 17% this year. And it's a lot of empty nesters leaving and new kids moving in. And Shannon was also echoing the same thing. All right. We will move on to public participation. Anybody here? No? Anybody on the phone, Paul? All righty. And we will get right into the budget workshop. And first up is the elementary schools, which I and Christine, who's not here, had the pleasure of meeting with them on the floor to go over. So where are we starting?
I think Bruce is going to come up and do the talking for the group.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. You just, yeah, you could pull that to Georgia.
I pulled it. It's mine, my voice.
Glad you said it, Jerry.
Susan, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Kelly and I have been working very closely on this, and I volunteered to do the presentation. I don't know, Joe, if you want to go up to the talking points on our slide.
Right there, Bruce. Just hit the button right on the right.
Oh, thank you. So I'm going to hit the five high points that you see on the screen. This was the majority of our conversation with Donna and with Christine Cosella when we met with them a week ago Friday, I guess it was. So basically, our budgets do not change a heck of a lot from year to year. Instructional supplies, obviously, as it says here, being the driver. We're going to need textbooks, we're going to need paper, we're going to need those things, they cost more every year. So that's where the bulk of our monies go. We did meet last year, Kelly, myself and Becky Cosisco, and we put our, our budget planning together, and we tried to come up in those supplies instructional area like we spoke. We tried to do a common amount for every student at every school. So you see the numbers may fluctuate. Monroe L's will be smaller, mine will be in the middle. Fawn Hollow will be a little bit larger just because of the enrollment. And I'll talk a little bit about enrollment later. So you may see some changes in those bottom lines, but basically, I mean, in those areas, but our bottom lines basically stay the same. The one thing we did add collectively was workbooks for math, just in kindergarten. Okay, so you see a little bit, we had, we had given back some of those funds in the past. So I remember my workbook account got cut from X thousand dollars down to zero. But we did add money back in there just for our kindergarten workbooks, not for the other grades. And as I said, our numbers don't really fluctuate that much from year to year. It's been hard to get an actual amount because we haven't actually spent the actual amount in many, many years. So, you know, we spend a percentage, normally it's about 50% before the budgets get frozen. But those are the numbers that we're using. The second thing we talked about, adding things back into our budgets for the upcoming year. The big thing, and it's not a big ticket item, but it helps us out a lot. It was a lunch pair of professionals because we can always have somebody at a lunch wave or a recess duty. And right now, currently Fawn Hollow and Stepney are both utilizing teachers to cover some of those duties. In the past, that was used for common planning time for teachers. We thought that was important enough to put that back in there for the lunch pair professional, or lunch pair educators at each one of our schools. So that's why that was put back in. A new proposal for next year is teacher in charge. A lot of times when Kelly or Lee or myself go out of the building, there's not another administrator in the building. So what this is, is a, is a one person at each building, it's a $1,500 stipend. So when we leave, you know, and if Shannon's teacher in charge, they'll say, you know, I'm going to an admin meeting. I'll be back in a couple hours. You know, you've got my, my phone numbers all there, the emails, everything all set. But it's just someone, a point person to go to, and that has been included in for next year's budget. Looking for on the horizon, we talk about the curriculum coordinators all the time, how important they are, how important they have been to our success, especially on our Sback scores. And again, we have none this year. We've gone without, we've put them back in, we're, we're without again. We're requesting that they be put back in for the 2022, 2023 budget. We just find it so important that they have their presence in the state, and they bring those things back to us. Especially Roseanne with the NGSS standards has been invaluable to make us a leader in the, in the state in that area. So they help us, obviously, with our professional development, but they help us in how we look around the state and what is actually going to happen coming up in the future. The library media specialist position at Stepney Elementary School was a transfer out this year at the end of the school year, and that position was never filled. The idea was to share a library media specialist among the three elementary schools. Because of cohorts and different buildings, because of COVID, what has happened is that Stepney has a librarian. The other two, two schools still have a library media specialist. So there are areas that are not covered by the librarian that we would like to see covered, especially in our element, our primary grades, that the library media specialist can handle, that the librarian does not do. The last thing was professional development, and I know Mrs. Cassinelli is going to talk about that shortly. But we do find as PD has been cut, and all of our past work with Teachers College has left a big void in our professional learning for our teachers for this current school year. So we're looking to get that back and add to that. I mean, again, with COVID going on and going places, you know, going out to workshops, it's not happening. Everything is all virtual now. But we are looking to add that, those monies back in to increase our professional development area. And finally, down at the bottom, I know you guys were just talking about as far as enrollment is concerned. We have concerns over a couple of things. I know Fawn Hollow added 53 students over the summer, Stepney added 47, Monroe L added 14. But I look at the numbers, those are twice what we normally bring in, in a typical summer. And so we're concerned as far as our, our number of FTEs and teaching positions are concerned. But I think primary grades are the key here because how many parents actually kept their students home this past year instead of enrolling them in kindergarten and, or plan to enroll them this year? We don't know. You know, I mean, come February, February signups for, you know, kindergarten enrollment, we'll get a better picture there. But are those numbers, like, I currently have 60 kindergarteners, so it's, you know, three classes of 20. I don't want them to get any larger, obviously, but do I have to budget for another kindergarten teacher? Does Fawn Hollow, does Monroe L? We don't know. So that's kind of the X factor here when it comes with our enrollment numbers. I know we have a couple of pressure points. I know Mr. Cobb has talked about them repeatedly in front of this board. You know, I know my, my second grade, there's a couple of grades over Fawn Hollow. And believe it or not, my fifth grade has gone from an average of like 22 up to 25, and that's all that summer enrollment. Now, I'm going to be a nice guy and pass those three classes at 25 up to the middle school and not have to worry about those. But, you know, it's the, the primary grades that have us mostly concerned as far as the enrollment is concerned, but that's what we're watching in particular. Yes?
Could you tell me more about the library media specialists? Like, what, like, if I'm working in your building, what would I see them doing?
Library media specialist?
Yeah.
For the upper grades, they teach digital citizenship?
What's that?
Basically, how to handle a computer, how to handle it online, what to look for, what you shouldn't be doing online. You know, because we live our lives virtually, and we've given these, this technology to students, and some of them don't know how to use it, and don't know how to use it properly. And I'll tell you a case in point. We've had people go up and teach them what they shouldn't be doing, and I got a fifth grade student doing it the next week. You know, and we, we get all that back, and it's all, you know, with all the filters. I get it. I go, excuse me, Johnny, did you say this? Or did you write this? Yeah, it was me. So digital citizenship is taught to the third grade first, then the fifth grade, and then the fourth grade. So it covers those classes over a period of, basically over the year. And with the primary grades, the library media specialist will talk all about technology. How to use technology, what's the proper way to go about it, what they're going to use it for, especially as far as reading books and things like that. So they do a lot of that, plus they see the classes in the library. Again, the younger grades have more time in the library than the upper grades too. But it's a lot of time with the library media specialist going out and instructing, because it is, it's part of the teachers' union. So they're actually instructing students in K through 5.
Like, let's just say I'm a fifth grade teacher. And like, what would the library media specialist do for my classroom? Like, how would it be plugged into my schedule?
I would rather...
Be done on a, on a regular basis for digital citizenship, one of those third parts of the year. And primarily, it's internet safety, accredited resources. They're doing a research paper, and they do a lot of that, and getting them ready for the middle school to do proper research. And what's a, what's a proper source, what's a primary source, and what not to use.
Yeah, they do a lot of research, like Bruce was just talking about. I'm just trying to see if I can pull it up, and of course, I'm not being able to find it fast enough. We can share out kind of a list of things at the next meeting. Of course, I'm trying to find it quickly, and I'm not being able to, so I...
No, it's okay. I'm just trying to wrap my head around what they do.
Yeah, there are shared experiences with lessons that dovetail into, like, Common Core, English Language Arts lessons. Sometimes they dovetail into the Next Generation Science lessons. So there'll be projects and things that are related to curriculum, so it's not an add-on. It's kind of how can I take what's happening in the curriculum and show what does that look like through technology? And the library media specialist will work with the students on researching and then doing some sort of a presentation. Is the presentation done in what used to be PowerPoint, is now slides in Google? Or are they doing, creating a blog post, you know, trying to expose them to different types of technology tools to be able to present the curriculum that they're learning?
A librarian is not certified teacher?
Correct.
Okay, so they can't teach? That would be the difference.
Correct. They support the library. You know, they still support the students taking books in and out. As classrooms come in, they'll still read stories to them and things like that, but it's the instructional piece that we're missing.
So who's covering that now that it's not happening in your building?
I do not have anybody teaching it in the younger grades. The, the lessons are given to my librarian, and she'll do digital citizenship with the older grades, 3, 4, and 5.
Alan, the ISTI standards also are part of Next Gen. I remember saying on the state committee, I mean, this is a lot larger than I think we understand. This is, Bruce, Bruce is hip of it. But to be Next Gen with the ISTI standards means it's showing the kids how to start from square one. It's just, you know, the website's not, yeah, but it's, we don't have, especially at Jacquet Hollow, we don't have a dedicated computer teacher anymore. I don't think you, you, you do either, and we used to. I mean, a computer teacher is part of the rotation, every child has it.
I think that's why Alan, Alan, excuse me, Jim Augustine pressed so hard to have library media specialists put in each one of the buildings.
I, I think that's why he pushed on some, was to try and fill a void.
Yeah.
Because I remember when my older two went through Monroe L, they actually had a weekly dedicated computer class that they would go to the computer lab. It was Lauren Garrera, who I think is at Jacquet Hollow now.
Yep.
And she would actually teach computers. They don't do that anymore. It's the library media specialist.
We cut it up, so now it's, it's falling on.
The ISTI standards are, the first one is empowered learner, digital citizen, knowledge constructor, innovative designer, computational thinker, creative communicator, and global collaborator. So there's like the overarching of which then they break it down by grade level as to what that standard looks like. So we incorporated that through the library media assured experiences that happen across all grades.
And to piggyback on what Donna was saying now, because there's a Chromebook for every student in every classroom, that the library media specialist will go right to your classroom.
Right.
And take over your classroom and teach them right there.
They're scheduled in every week, Kelly and Lee. What does their schedule look like?
It's pretty jam-packed because they do push into the classroom to deliver that instruction, but they still will work with children for stories and book exchange and whatnot, as well for just a little part of their day. But they're, they're like, they don't have downtime. They're, they're busy.
One period per library and one period per...
And that's why the, the library time for like a fifth grade student would be cut down like 15 minutes, just take books out, because they're getting the research and the technology part in their classroom. Whereas a primary student K 1 and 2 would have 30 minutes in the library, plus another 30 minutes in the classroom.
Thank you.
Other questions for elementary? Go ahead.
I just had one question, one comment. Last year, um, last year in the cuts, we had a reduction in furniture replacements. Is that back? I don't believe so, no. So it's still cut from...
No, I don't, I don't think so. That furniture that was cut was supposed to be from the principal's office, I think, from our school furniture.
The other thing I just want to make a pitch to my, to my fellow board members is the summer reading program that Alex showed passionate about last year. I think I might take that on this year. It's not in the budget, and I want to make a pitch to the board now, and I will continue to do this before we vote on the budget, that I think that we need to add into that. Listen, it doesn't, you know, you don't need an advanced degree in education to know that we are not sure how the kids are going to come back after COVID. And I think next summer, this upcoming summer, if all goes well, and we're able to open next fall, I think the summer's going to be a very, very important timeframe, especially for K-5 students going into next fall. I mean, I was, as I was, as I circled this in red, knowing that I want to talk about, we talked about elementary schools, I'm thinking about the kindergartner who went out in March and is now doing first grade this year. And September 2021, his budget is going to go in second grade. They are going to need that, and it doesn't matter if they were here, here, or here. It, it, all, it's going to be everyone. And so I think that that extra $15,000 in that extra work certified line, those extra work certified reading summer lines is going to be some money that we're going to be very less spending.
It's a tier three intervention, right?
Yes.
But I mean, like, what does it look like over the summer?
At Stepney, we have groups in the morning. We have a Monday, Wednesday group each morning for four weeks, and a Tuesday, Thursday group. And anyone that, that receives reading support gets a letter, and he gets invited to come to summer reading to continue the work they've done through the course of the school year. And again, and...
Bussing like twice a week for four, for...
Twice, yeah. Two mornings a week for four weeks during the month of July.
Parents drop, parents bring them, so there's no bussing involved, and it's just parents bring their child to them for twice a week, and it runs the same time as the summer school for special education.
So they would, you'd do something like that, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd do something like that in a case where kids not reading on, with students reading below grade level, and they're kind of on the cusp of being referred to special education, and this would be like an intervention you try. And this would be like an intervention you try, to try to catch them off before, you know, to see if they could pick up the material.
Yeah, they've been identified and picked up through the course of the year.
Yeah.
Would the $15,000 come to all three elementary schools?
It's $5,000. The budget, $5,000.
What I read. No, I understand.
Other questions?
Like I said, Christine and I talked in great detail with the three elementary schools, you know. Obviously, the big concerning thing, at least for us, is enrollment. It is very concerning about if we're going to need to add classes because that will be additions to this budget. Bruce not having a library media specialist is very concerning. We also talked about, you know, right now in the coordinators. The other big thing was the coordinators. We do not have a math and science coordinator and they're not in this budget. And that is going to be an issue in the next year or two. By not having coordinators, we will, we will start to feel that. Those are facts.
You guys, like I said, a kudos to all, all three schools. What you couldn't tell me is Stephanie, Juan Hollow, Monroe Well, what you spend on Jimmy at Stephanie and what you spend on Joe at Monroe Well, as far as the plan?
As far as this budget is, we started it last year. It's not, yeah, Becky and Kelly and myself did. It's not a perfect science. It's not completely done, but that's, that's the structure.
I don't know if it's a perfect science. It just sounds fair. How about?
Okay.
And I think it's also important to note, and like they've mentioned about kindergarten workbooks. In the elementary schools, none of the grades have math workbooks. They are, and they're putting back the kindergarten ones. So if you have an elementary school child, they do not. In the past, you would have your math and focus book and you would do work. There is no workbooks. The teachers do printouts and the kids work off the printouts. There are no workbooks. So they're asking for just the kindergarten kids to have those actual workbooks. They're not even looking to put those back in.
What about this? And this was for our schools as well. All of this is, I echo what Jerry said. Thank you all for the time we're doing. All of this is our budget based on a full in-person.
School year.
Look different if we were hybrid? Would this look different if we were full remote?
There are going to be some, some items, instructional items that are probably not going to be used, but not many. Not many. I'd say it would be similar. It may go, it may go down by 10% Shannon.
What I, what I'm thinking is for cleaning ahead purposes in a, you know, unprecedented pandemic. For every, for every, I, you know, for everything, what's, this is, this is the budget for full in-school. How does it change? I think some numbers are going to go down and some numbers are going to go up for hybrid and have like a, like a intended Plan D or intended Plan C.
Yeah, I mean.
I know this isn't what we submit to the town and stuff, but I just think we have to be thinking along these lines.
Interesting.
Part of the assumptions that we made when we did the budget was that we were going to be in a post-COVID world. So if we're not, and hopefully we will be, but if we're not, we're going to have to really look at this. That was one of the assumptions that we made coming into this budget.
And again, anything we're currently going through, I mean, we'll take copious notes and make sure that we address that if we continue in this vein.
You just have to be the person sitting there right now, what I'm saying.
I get it. I get it. That's fine. No, it's a great point.
What we do every year. And it's, you know, it's just that 2020 is just so different. And maybe all of us have to think about what the potentials are going to look like, what our new normal is going to look like. Is it going to be hybrid? Is it going to be full remote? Is it going to be full person? Is it going to shift a little bit a lot like it did this year?
Yeah.
Then what will we need more of and what will we need less of?
Unfortunately, everything's a learning process, Shannon. And I think this, what we're going through right now is a learning process. We have to be, we have to do our due diligence as far as, you know, taking those notes and making sure we utilize that going forward, whatever the future looks like.
Right, exactly. It is exactly like China's predicted future. What am I going to need if I'm full remote? What am I going to need if it's hybrid?
And I don't even know if we're going to have the answers to that until well into the new fiscal year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but better plan the best you can. Kind of like Jeff.
Oh, yeah. You can plan and have different scenarios like we've had to do for the state in July. In July, we had to submit three plans, full hybrid, I mean, hybrid, full in-person, full remote. So we'd probably do roughly the same thing, but we probably won't know where we are until probably late July, August.
Right, and that could change throughout the school year like it did this year too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, you just don't know.
I just kind of want to like have that on our radar.
Yeah.
And it's like, it's no easy task. It's like, it's completely unprecedented. It's, it's this huge shift that happened so fast. Like, you know, education world, but, but it's just, it's like the elephant in the room that we can't ignore, right?
And we think we understand that it's going to change again.
That's probably the only thing we can turn on, right? Instead of, we'll stay the same.
And we have a good basis, given the fact that it had to be, we had to submit something for the state for those scenarios. So really, it's going to take that base of what we submitted last year and make changes to really what is working, what's not working, what needs to be improved, you know?
It might be like, I don't know how that would, it's, you know.
And I just wanted to thank Jeff, who's walking out the door, for being a part of Curriculum Council because that's, you know, a big piece of how we take a look at new curriculum and bring it forward to the board for then your approval before we adopt new programs and new resources and things like that. And I wanted to thank Nick for meeting with me, was it two weeks, almost two weeks ago, December 4th, I think it was, to kind of take a look at my budget and go over things too. So I have this. I'm going to move along. I put this picture, this is from March, sorry, May, two years ago. At the end of every school year, I would meet with the reading consultants and every grade level for two hours. And we would plan out our entire next school year with the teacher's college resources and say, what are we going to be teaching for reading and writing and phonics going forward? When I look at this picture, it's so strange to see so many people so close together without masks on. But I do hope at some point we can get back into being able to pull people together to do this kind of work because it took two days to get through the sixth grade levels. But the amount of information and talking to the teachers is, you taught poetry here, but then did that fit? Or do we want to move it to a different time? We'd sit with the school calendar and we say, okay, there's 20 lessons here. We count out how many days, we add some extra days in and try to help them with their scope and sequence because our calendar changes every year. And then we also change the units that we're teaching too when we add to make things better. And I just, I hope we can get back to something like that. So I had to include that picture. So my curriculum lines, I see a lot of different lines. Some I actually control and some I don't. But I can see them. So when you look at the detail for my lines, you'll see that there are some things, like I have AV repairs that Paul really controls, but there used to be an AV repairs for PD. So that's why I can see that line. When we get to conference course, registration fees are PD lines. I can see the building principals lines, but they're the ones who actually budget for it. So that way I can kind of help support them when they're sending teachers. So the, some of these lines that I'm going to talk about, I actually have a lot of control with and some I don't. The first one is curriculum writing. And that's when we bring a new course to you, we'll pay teachers to work on the summer before the course starts to actually write the curriculum. So if it's a brand new course, they get 40 hours of curriculum writing. And if it's a revision or a half-year course, it's only 20 hours. So that's a chunk of here with all the new courses that have come through to you during the course of the school year. But then Next Generation Science Standards are something that we've been working on now for a couple of years. And we need to continue to work on and figure out how is the best way to maneuver putting those standards into our classrooms. And we're trying certain experiments with Roseanne Haughton and Jim Stozel. Certain things work and certain things don't. So I have earmarked 150 hours for both Roseanne and Jim. So K through six has 150 hours and I have six through 12 has 150 hours to work on curriculum writing. There, I have some hours in there for Kevin Welch to work. Niasca has asked them to kind of take a look at the math levels at the high school. So he wants to sit with some teachers to take a look at that. So there's a handful of hours. Then I have some that I have put in for English Language Arts at K to five. They're all kind of ballpark. So like Roseanne may only need 130 hours, but I bookmarked 150 for her. But I may have Ann O'Doy who will come to me and say, we've got, you know, SEL is huge this year. I want to write some guidance lessons for our teachers to be able to use in the classrooms. So then I'm going to pull some hours to her. So it's, I have some wiggle room with this one. But I did reduce it because again, I tried to earmark it and say, okay, it's going to be 150 of this, 150 of that. Plus, I've got all the new courses and I kind of put them in there too. Professional development in-house is paying teachers to do a presentation. So with all of the technology, we've been paying teachers who have learned how to use Jamboard. We'll teach other teachers who don't know how to use it, people who are using Google Forms to do as assessments. We teach other teachers and we pay them on the days that they do that, that actual teaching. We also pay our teachers who come in for DaVinci on the Saturday to be able to support seeing families and supporting the curriculum. Since we are not having DaVinci again next year, that's why you see my reduction is the $2,800. Best mentor is really team. Best, when, I guess when Munis was set up with this particular line, best was beginning educator support, supporting teachers was, and now it's called team, which is teacher educator. I can't even remember what it stands for. But it's our year one and year two teachers and we support them with a mentor. We assign them a mentor in our district. The mentor meets with them once a week. They complete two papers or modules, one in the fall and one in the spring. The mentor and the beginning teacher need to meet for 10 hours per module. There is a website that East Con, one of the RESCs up the line, that created years and years ago that we as a district chose to use and it's phenomenal. A few years ago, the state, when they ran into all their budget concerns, stopped paying, giving monies to the district to pay for the website and to pay the mentors for being a mentor to a beginning teacher. So the districts had to pick up those monies. So that's why my budget in this particular line, it's more than just a stipend for somebody. We have somebody who's our master mentor, who is a, a mentor. She's been a mentor multiple years with multiple teachers at different levels. And she reads their module papers and helps support them. She provides professional development for them. That's all part included in her mentor stipend. But this line also includes paying our mentors, which we follow with the state guidelines for it. It's $500 for the year for the mentor to work with the beginning teacher or 250 for a half a year. And then our, our mentors, many of them, review papers. So they'll go onto the website and read papers from other districts and rate them within the website. We don't know who the teacher is. We don't know what district they're from. We're just reading the paper. So we pay our mentors to read the papers and that's part of this line as well. And we find that it, the mentors say it helps them tremendously to be able to help the beginning teacher. So we want to be able to support that. But the Connecticut Department of Education actually picked up the cost of the website this year. So that's the reduction that you see on my line. I'm hoping at some point, if the state can get into a better spot, they'll be able to pick up the actual mentor costs because then I'll be able to drop this line down by a lot. But for now, it's still in there. And then the next two items that are on this slide are the K five math coordinator. I had budgeted to kind of keep it in there for next year. And then when Joe and I were talking and taking a look at things, it really made more sense to take it out. The extra work for the K five coordinator is during the summer, when the position started, we were still in CMT land. And the CMT results used to come out the weekend of July 4th, often on, like July 4th. So the K five coordinators were paid for three days to come in during the summer and do all that data analysis so that when our teachers came back in August, we could say, here's all the results for your students that you had last year. And here are all the results for your students that you have this year. So you have a point of reference for them. After we switched over to Sback, the K five coordinators would come in and do that curriculum writing. They wouldn't get paid the hourly rate. They'd be paid to be able to pull all that information they got together to be able to share out to teachers in August. So those two have both been reduced from my line. The next one that I have here is conference course registration fees. And my line used to be $10,000, just shy of 10, sometimes 10, sometimes 9,500. Last, this current year, it's at zero. And I'm just kind of slowly easing us back in. So I have budgeted $5,000 for next year. And as you can see at the bottom, I can see the lines for the principals I put in, but I don't actually control them. And that's helpful because I'll have a secondary instructional leader contact me or a teacher contact me and say, or a principal say, I really want to have, you know, Sheila go to this workshop. It costs $300. I really don't want to use that much because as you can see, the buildings don't have a whole lot of money and they've got a lot of staff. So they don't want to give up a chunk of change for just one meet workshop. So I'll say to them, okay, if I can see how much they've already spent and know that they haven't used a lot, maybe I'll go half with them. I do a lot of half. I'll pay half for the workshop, you pay half for the workshop, and that's where my $5,000 gets used. And then the next line is professional development in-service external vendor. And that's having different organizations do the professional development. So I have in here TAF, which is our AP training. That's in there because we're having Ian's new course, so we need to have somebody newly trained for that one. And if you hurt, remember hearing Steve talk about TAF training in his, because of the change in the secondary instructional leader, of Jeff going to become a secondary instructional leader, they're hot, going to train another social studies teacher to pick up his course. So Jeff, Steve is picking up one and I'm picking up the other training. Then we have PMT training, which is the restraint training that our special education teachers and classroom teachers and special area teachers will need for handling certain children who may have behavioral issues. We have a train the trainer model, so I actually have to train our four staff in PMT. So still in there is the PMT and the TAF. What I took out was Wilson training. Wilson is a reading, very systematic reading program that many people who are strongly in the dyslexic realm on how, if their child is diagnosed with dyslexia and the research shows that a very systematic reading program is one that will be very supportive for them. They will request that their child is taught through the Wilson program. And Wilson changed their guidelines on how this happens a few years ago, that now the person has to be actually certified through Wilson. It's a full year training. The teacher actually is basically taking graduate courses at night. Then they have a student that they're, they have to test who has to qualify. They would work with that student for an hour a day during the entire school year. They have to write specific lesson plans. The lesson plans get sent to their mentor through Wilson, who gives them feedback on the lesson plans and how to help support the child. And at the end of the year, then they are considered a licensed Wilson teacher. We keep trying to add more of them to our buildings. We have one at Stepney, one at Monroe Well. We have one who's in the process of getting the training at Fawn Hollow. And I have one at Jockey Hollow between special education teachers and reading teachers. So I'm, we keep trying to add more because we keep getting more students who are requiring it. And because it takes an hour a day, it really restricts our staff. Alan?
What about Orton Gillingham? I thought that one was going to be more comprehensive.
It's also very, very comprehensive. They're very similar. Actually, if you take a look at the two of them, they are very similar. The dyslexic groups that are out there are just vent on Wilson. So when we have parents who come in with advocates or, you know, have had their child tested outside and come in with a dyslexia diagnosis, their recommendation and the thing that the parent pushes for is to make sure that we have somebody who's Wilson trained. Even though Orton Gillingham is absolutely a phenomenal. Even though Orton Gillingham is absolutely a phenomenal instructional model and very, very similar. But the focus for anyone with dyslexia is all about Wilson these days. Um, so I took out the Wilson training and I'm hoping that if I can, I'm going to try and pick that up with a grant. So I'm writing a different grant, uh, title four grant with the slant of trying to get in the Wilson training. I'm working on that one with the state. Um, and then instructional supplies art, we are not having DaVinci again, so I can reduce that amount. Unfortunately, I hope we can get that back in the near future too. Cause that's always an amazing thing to watch. The talents of our children, it just, it boggles my mind. When you start downstairs and you walk through the elementaries, up to the middle school and go up to see the rest of the middle school and the high school. It's just the talents of the kids in Monroe is just absolutely incredible.
What does that cost per year?
It's about, almost just shy of $10,000. So that's why it's between the, the money for the teachers who come in on the weekend as well as the, the supplies.
It is a loss. I, 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 I always enjoyed it every year. It's a loss.
It is a loss. I agree. Um, so the next is new curriculum. And this is my line that bounces all over the place. It can either be my highest line or my lowest line, depending on the courses and resources that are brought to the Board of Education. Um, if you take a look at the chart at the bottom, you'll see the different courses that have been brought to the Board of Ed and approved. The health is the only thing, uh, no, sorry. The health and the AP stats are coming to you in February. Um, but I put in there, for budgeting purposes, I put in there amounts for right now. The other courses, what we did, Joe and I kind of took a look at the actual enrollments in these courses comparatively to the number of books that the SIL was looking for, for the course. And we found, and having conversations with them said, can we kind of not order quite so many books? So Lisa Peterson, for example, in the Spanish two, you see, we dropped it $10,000. She's ordering one class set of books. She has two teachers who teach the course. She's ordering one set of classroom books that'll stay in the classroom because they also come with an online version. And when the teacher is teaching Spanish three, the teacher will move to that classroom where the resources are. So rather than needing resources in two different rooms, that's how we're going to be able to do it. Um, and similar conversations with Jim Stolzel for the bio and the chemistry as well as, you know, how can, taking a look at the number of courses we have and how can we share resources? And the online pieces are, will definitely be huge. And then health with the Niasse, and you'll hear more about this in the springtime. With Niasse requiring that our students take the one full credit, we have to add extra health courses. But rather than buying a textbook, there's an online coursework that Jim, I'm sorry, John D. Gennaro would like to buy for the two teachers so that they have access to it for any of their courses that they'll be doing. So you'll hear more about that in the spring.
And the health one is, is from the state.
Correct.
That's the new graduation requirement.
Yep. Yes, excuse me. So it's, and also Niasse was also, it's, it's a combination of the two. But yes, it is part of the high school graduation, which is our current sophomores.
Sheila, before, um, I want to say thank you as well. We had a really good conversation a few weeks ago. But before, can you talk a little bit about, um, the fact that we're not budgeting for interns again? What they did, uh, it's the second year in a row that we're not budgeting for them. It's a lot of money, but where do they come from? What do they do? Why are they kind of going through this?
Sure. Um, well, I'm a big proponent of Team, which is our beginning teachers. I'm the district facilitator that oversees that. And what I love about working with the beginning teachers is what they kind of bring to our district. And their, you know, eagerness to try new things, the things that they can share with us that maybe they've learned in their coursework. And the same can be said for interns. Many of our staff that we've hired over the years have been former interns who have been in our district. Um, an intern typically comes from either Fairfield View or Sacred Heart. Typically, we'll occasionally have them from other universities, but typically that's where they come from. They range in price per year of between $16,000 and $17,000, depending on the university. What we do is we are actually paying the university that cost. The intern then does not have to pay tuition and they come to work for us for free, um, as it were. But they are basically a building sub. They're in our schools every single day. Um, and they may cover meetings, they may cover duties, you know, whatever the case may be, a teacher's out sick or you have a long-term teacher who's out for a period of time, maybe, maybe in that classroom. At some point during the course of the year, and again, depending on the program that the teacher is in, they either have an eight, 10, or 12-week student teaching. So then they're offline from us. They're not a sub for us for that eight, 10, or 12-week period of time. Um, but in the meantime, they're working in the classrooms and supporting our students and learning the way we do things. Um, most often, they're not required to come to our PD days, um, but most often they do. Um, they're not required to stay for after-school grade level meetings and most often they do. Um, they've been incredibly beneficial to us. The problem is that it's a big expense.
Well, it is and it isn't. Joe, um, what are we paying a permanent sub in Monroe right now?
105.
105 a day.
So if we take the eight, 10, and 12, and we find an average of the weeks they're student teaching, for like a hundred dollars a day, you're getting a permanent sub in your building, that intern. So it depends how you look at the math here.
Right.
I mean, I, I benefited from interns, my 34 years, I started with Sacred Heart. I probably had 25 interns and we hired just about three quarters of them.
And that was the reason why I wanted Sheila to really talk about it, because it's our pipeline.
Oh, yeah.
And it's also about getting people in Monroe who not only they're comfortable here when we hire them, but the students are already comfortable with them. And it's a seamless transition. I mean, they're doing the job. I mean, it's a, it's a big expense. I know it was six, it's.
Sixteen, five, I think.
Yeah, it depends on the school. It's either sixteen, sixteen-five, sometimes seventeen. Again, it depends on the school.
And I know it's probably too big of a, a, a haul for this year, but I think we have to keep this at the forefront of our minds.
Mm-hmm.
If it works, the math, which is really the same. If it works where you could decrease the substitute, if you can look at it that way and you can.
But we also have permanent subs in our building. And they're here for the entire school year and they don't leave for that period of time for student teaching. So.
When, when we pulled these out, I'm sorry, Shannon. But when we pulled these out for the current year that we're living right now, um, we didn't just, um, you know, we, we didn't just reduce the sixteen-five. We actually added a little bit to our substitute lines, knowing that we weren't going to have these folks to substitute. So we had to add a little bit in the, in the substitute line, in the, uh.
Which I was just going to say, you know, we add permanent, we have permanent subs. We had to boost that permanent sub line.
Right.
Yeah.
So how much did the sub line go off?
Uh, I have to, I'd have to look back. I don't.
I don't remember that either.
Forget what it was. Uh, we, we like worked out the, uh, I'll go back and take a look at it.
Yeah, it's just, you know, Joe, and of course, Joe, I, I know, you know, you and Shannon, I know you guys have all, Nick, you guys all run into interns. I mean, I think, Nick, what you hit on the head is if the student, no matter if they're in math one morning or in language arts the next morning, or in foreign language the next day, they know that person in front of them. And even if that person's not a foreign language specialist, the student knows that person in front of them. And I just think it makes the learning a lot better.
I like the pipeline aspect too, because, you know, you know, you think people maybe you want to hire them, people maybe you know you're nuts.
There you go. Shannon, that's, it's, it's a good, yes.
It's a lot more information than you're going to get from a sit-down interview.
It's a, it's a, it's a great interview.
Oh, it's a year-long interview is really what it is. Yeah, they're, I mean, they're phenomenal. It was just, uh, gotta be what, two years ago, maybe three years ago? I think of the people who we had hired, all but two had been former, either, either Monroe students themselves or had been here as.
So it's like building, you know.
Building capacity.
Building or, you know.
And I do, if I can add just one more plug, um, for the K-5 coordinators. And I, I know I'm kind of a, I, I know I'm, I'm kind of a broken record when it comes to it. But, uh, they are amazing. Um, Roseanne is back in the classroom. Cindy retired, um, rather than going back into the classroom because she had the years and was able to do that. Um, but the loss that the elementary are feeling without having them in their roles is huge. Um, and we did, you know, as Bruce said, we did a couple of years ago, have them go back in the classroom. And we felt it that year. And now here we are feeling it again. I know multiple conversations I've had with, with Joe is to, you know, have them budgeted for next school year to, to get them back in their positions. When the SILs came on board for 612, they had always been that department chair for the middle school. But when they came on for the 612, the amount of change that we saw at the middle school level to have that continuity of curriculum going right up to the high school. And the conversations and collaboration between our K-5 coordinators and our secondary instructional leaders is huge to ensure that we're having that K-12 conversation for what it looks like. And I just, I worry if we keep it out for too long, the effects that we're going to see for it. So I just putting in a little plug.
Sheila, what would, um, like the typical day of a K-5 coordinator look like? Like say I showed up and I was going to stop, I was going to shadow one, like what would I say?
Uh, you could see them meeting with teachers before school, doing a, um, book club. You could see them in the classrooms, uh, doing demonstration lessons. You could see them during a midday meeting, meeting with teachers, going over assessments or planning an upcoming assessment or curriculum. Um, the same could be for an after-school district grade level meeting. They would do all of those things too. Modeling something that they want teachers to try in their rooms, um, looking at the assessment that they've currently done and how can we use that information to further instructional process? Um, they're also looking for resources. Roseanne Haughton, as our science, K-5 science coordinator, still, she's still in that role and still supporting our teachers, but she's also teaching full-time. Um, so I thank her for all of her efforts with doing that. But Roseanne is still very involved on the state level. Um, she has, is on a committee with Next Generation Science, actually writing the science assessments and reviewing assessments that are coming from other places, the questions that our students are seeing. Um, Jim Stolzel also is on state assessment committee work for the NGSS test. Um, so, you know, kind of having that is really huge.
And so one thing I just wanted to raise our attention in Sheila's budget that we had on our desks when we came here, we do have the 4515, or 4,515 dollars for the science stipend.
The math stipend. Well, the, the, the science is still in and we've taken out the math, correct?
And so I live in my second club, I believe, right? Is I would like to see us add the 4515 back for the stipend, just the stipend for math. And here's why. Um, you know, K-5 is such a foundational product, right? And so K-5 is really like, I equate it to kind of like laying the foundation of a house, right? And you can't build on top of a shaky foundation. Now, math is a very, um, I could say a lot about math, but it's a very unique discipline. It, it uses very unique parts of the brain that might not be exercised in other disciplines. And, um, you know, there's a lot of literature out there, academic literature about K-6 math and how it affects students and their math trajectory going forward. And you know what one of the highest correlated variables of success in 612 math is based on K-6 math? It's confidence in the teacher perceived by the student. It's how much the student liked their teacher and how much they perceived that that teacher liked math. Um, I can't tell you how many times I get freshmen in college who will be in my office hours all semester. And I'll say, well, see, I saw you at a precalculus year and they go, oh, yeah, but my teacher was awful. I liked math before senior year. How could that be? You liked math the whole way, day through 11, and then you got a bad teacher and now you don't like math? So if you're not quantitatively driven, but you're, you're an elementary school teacher, you don't have to be a math teacher to be an elementary school teacher. But your students can perhaps perceive that that's not your favorite topic. And there's many programs, Sacred Heart being one of them, where in the elementary ed program, there's a math course in the math department called Math for Elementary School Teachers. It's a whole three-credit class because it's such a, it's such a different, it's so specialized and it's such a foundational way to take quantitative literacy in 612 to the next level. It's so, so necessary and so lack of regular. Um, that's not to say that the elementary teachers who are teaching now are not doing absolutely everything they can do. It's just really hard to do first and second grade over Zoom already. And then you're trying to do 1st and 2nd grade math. I mean, I barely use collegiate math over Zoom and I have 20-year-olds. I, I, I honestly, God, could not fathom what a first or second grade math lesson looks like today. And so what this stipend does is, this is a position where teachers, elementary school teachers can have someone to lean on to learn more about and get ideas where they have feedback on their math lessons, which will hopefully help the students perceive that their teacher likes math and they're doing well in math and that kind of breaks the cycle and you go forward. So I think it's something we really, really should think about as we discuss the budget, this, um, this 4,500 dollars, at least get a little bit in there before we try to jump next year into.
Thank you. I mean, Cindy Booker did an amazing job. She was also, as Roseanne was staying current with the science, Cindy was always finding more resources to be able to support teachers. And especially in areas that they may have had difficulty trying to teach. She would say, okay, I've got to find another way for it. And she would scour and find things that, from other states that were shared in public on, on the website to be able to share with our teachers to help support them. So I, I second, I mean, it's, it's a great support for our staff.
So can I ask what the plan is then for next year if we don't have this 4,500 stipend in there?
We have, um, a math coach at each building. Um, and they do get a, a stipend to support the building. The, the difference in looking at the K-5 coordinator is that they know all six grade levels and the standard specifically. Like Cindy could tell you how the standard for geometry grew across the grades. Um, our math coaches help support the teachers by looking at data for some of their assessments and looking at resources and supplies and materials and those kinds of things. Um, it's, I'm going to have to see how much I can help work with our math coaches to be able to support the teachers. Because right now, we don't have anybody designated to do that. And to ask a classroom teacher to try and do all six grade levels when they're teaching their own grade level, right now in this crazy hybrid, remote, whatever we're doing, um, for them to try and learn the other five grade levels is a really, a lot to ask a teacher. Um, so I think it's really going to be some, kind of tapping into our math coaches to be able to have, support the buildings for next year.
Thank you. And I'm going to date myself a little because I remember, because I did serve on with Amy Primarac when we introduced the new math and focus program for our elementary schools. And I got to tell you, the undertaking that Cindy Booker took, undertook, getting that all done. We had multiple vendors come in, do presentations, we ran breakout groups. If we did not have a coordinator, that work would not have been able to done, been done. And that implementation would not have gone as smoothly as it had gone.
Agreed.
And I will, and I'm going to date myself even more. And one of the other things the math coordinator did, at least when my older two was in elementary school, is they would be the noetic learning, um, coordinator, coach, whatever you want to call it, and go to the different schools and help prepare those kids for that noetic learning test.
Yeah. Yeah, we've said all along, I mean, the coordinators, like I said, we, we can get by for a year or two, but it's going to be, it's.
Yeah, crucial positions.
It's, it's really important. And the, the coaching model, it's great, it helps. But to have a person who's designated just for that, all the research shows that, that, you know, and having a designated coordinator who can give you that through line that Sheila's talking about, is so much more valuable to a district. Thanks, Sheila.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, guess who's up?
Can I just, uh, the question was, was how much was added back for the interns, substitutes? For each intern that was displaced? It was, uh, $9,728 for each $16,000 intern that was removed from the budget.
So it was what, a net seven?
Uh, net, just over, about, net 6,300.
So for every intern removed, you added 9,000 plus to the sub line?
Back, yes.
So it's a net, I'm sorry, net 6,300.
Net of about 6,300.
That we saved 6,300 by getting rid of them.
You saved 6,300.
Per school.
Per school.
I was going to say, I thought it was around $30,000.
Yeah, it was five, yeah.
Yeah, it's about $30,000.
Okay, so 30,000, okay. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron. That was pretty quick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good morning.
I apologize for, uh, having to give you more paperwork with the updated numbers here, but, uh, that was a mess up on my part. All right, so twenty, I should say twenty-twenty-two, oops. All right, so, um, some noteworthy budget changes. Uh, software renewals, we saw a forty-three thousand dollar increase, and the two biggest drivers for that were I X L, which is a subscription-based learning service. They expanded the grade levels in the subjects to support the remote learning. Uh, but the good thing is, is that when we're full in-person, we can still use those resources. Um, and also Kami, which is an online collaboration and annotation, uh, platform. However, that said, we were able to reduce our technical services line by thirty-four thousand dollars. We did that by finding some savings. We realized some savings with, uh, our new copier contract, uh, as well as favorable pricing with our Verizon cell phones. One of the other cuts that were, that was made was for the, uh, equipment repairs audio visual. Uh, we have not been replacing as many projectors as we thought. Now, some of that could be related to COVID, and we're not in classrooms and they're not using the projection equipment as heavily. So overall, I'm presenting a budget decrease of one point four eight percent, or thirteen thousand dollars and two, thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. However, that said, that's the operating side. The capital side, which I'm sure we'll be meeting about again, um, there will be a big ask this year. And I also, too, I would like to thank Dave Ferris for meeting with me and going over this, um, reviewing these, uh, these numbers. Um, we'll go into more detail, I guess, when the time is right, but just to put it out there, um, the request this year is, again, part of the five-year capital plan that I presented last year, which has now been updated and to reflect the changes we made last year. Because I had asked for a hundred and ninety-five thousand for various things, uh, the bulk of that money went to Chromebooks. We will not be buying Chromebooks next year. So the request is for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a hundred and fourteen K five teacher laptops that are now approaching eight years of service. I just wanna say, too, that my team did a phenomenal job in supporting the teachers when they had to go remote with technology that was approaching eight years old. Um, you know, the newer laptops, you, you know, you plug in a webcam and you go and everything works. We had a lot of problems, um, and we were able to work through pretty much all of them. So, um, that just speaks to the dedication of my team and the persistence. So, yeah, eight, eight years on a laptop, we've, we've gotten every penny out of them and then some. So regardless of whether we're in-person, remote, hybrid, they need to be replaced, period. Um, also, along those lines, uh, thirty thousand dollars for, uh, to support the office desktop replacements in school offices, central office, it's basically across the board. Uh, these computers are now approaching six years. Um, we've upgraded the ones that we could. I just don't, I can't justify spending any more money on these machines, um, and they need to be replaced. We need to get off Windows Seven, any of the machines that we still have out there that are Windows Seven. There's a handful left, uh, but they need, they need upgrades, so they need to be replaced. Any questions?
What happened with Google?
What happened with Google? Uh, Google, Google went down this morning. Um, it was funny because as I was driving in this morning, I got a call from, uh, one of my techs who said, we're getting calls about Google being down. And I said, all right, while I'm on twenty-five, I'll be there in a few minutes. Um, and I was listening to ten-ten wins news, like I do every morning, and as I was pulling into the back of Monroe Elementary to my parking spot, I heard, oh, if you're having problems with Google, it's not you, it's them worldwide, so, um. I haven't been able to find any good information on exactly what happened, other than they seem to have rolled back some changes. But they typically, they say, yeah, uh, we, we had an outage, um, we've now fixed it and, you know, we, we try to keep things up to date, uh, for our end users and we apologize. That's about all you get out of them. Yeah, that's, that's it.
What you could do on your end is, like you said, it's, it's not us.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's a double-edged sword. Google is a great platform. Uh, without Google, I, I don't know how we would have been able to do all the remote stuff that we did. But when they go down.
Wow, great.
Yeah. It's, it's tough. So, uh, yeah, thankfully, it wasn't us, it was them. Uh, and thankfully, by about eight o'clock, it was back up and running, so.
All right, Paul, what's your secret, your miracle secret, that you were able to keep laptops functional for eight years? That's unheard of.
Well, you know what? We, we have a saying in the department, and I'll, 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 I'll say it, I'll say it publicly, uh, because we're now out of it, and it's duct tape, bubble gum, spit, glue. We have no more. So, um, yeah, I, you know, it's, it's the same thing every year. You know, we've, we've Frankensteined devices where we could. I'm so glad that we capped all of the older laptops that we had had, too, um, that were really slated for the recycling heap, because then the pandemic hit and everybody wanted a laptop. And I, and we don't buy, you know, tons of extra laptops. So we had deployed a lot of fully retired laptops to, across the enterprise, both the Board of Ed and the town, you know, so that people could work remotely. And it was, it was, it was a huge challenge.
Hey, Paul.
Hey, Jerry.
I, I've got a few wants if I was in your seat.
Okay.
So I wanna know how your group keeps informed and up, up to date. I, I know professional development for your crew is different than it is for teachers, but I know they need to be up to date.
Correct.
So in your budget, where's the need for them to be kept up to date, to be good on their own? Do, like, here, there's one line, I, I'm here, it says, um, let me see, using fees for technology central office, it was, it was like almost sixteen hundred, it's now zero. So fifteen thirty-seven.
Oh, yeah.
The last line of the sheet, you handed out.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm just looking at it from a point of view that I worked with you guys so closely for thirty-four years, I wanna know how, how you, how are you guys getting enriched? I mean, I see it very obviously, it's on the line, I got it.
Right.
But how does your crew keep up to date?
That's a great question.
Because there's nothing here to, I'm, well, I'm trying to help you.
No, 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 right, you know, so our major focus, you know, five years ago, ten years ago, my major focus was on supporting our end users, making sure they had everything they, you know, that was priority one, especially, um, in the classroom, making sure that a teacher could walk in, everything worked, and, and we were off to the races. That focus has now changed. My number one focus is keeping this entire infrastructure up and running. From ransomware, cyber actors, okay? Public schools, municipalities across the state and, you know, the, the nation are, are now, they have huge targets on them. From criminal actors operating in foreign countries, they get the same news that we get about COVID, about the election, you name it. And they are banking on our users to be careless. So, you know, at the beginning of the school year, remember Hartford had a delay? That was because they were hacked. They got ransomware, put down their entire system, and they took it down for days.
So I didn't know that Hartford had a delay in big starting schools.
Oh, they took, they, they closed for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they were hacked.
Yes.
And it's not just them, it was, it was in other states, too, that, you know, that I hadn't read.
Oh, it, the city of Atlanta was shut down, the city of Baltimore, twenty-seven counties in Texas. Bridgeport Public Schools.
Yes, Bridgeport, I was gonna say.
Was ha, and, and anything that wasn't in the cloud was lost forever.
See, Paul, that's, that's my point. I'm looking at travel, system-wise, so you don't pay your debts for travel anymore? They, they travel on their own from school to school?
No, that's, that's budgeted.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not budgeted on that line.
As, I'm just concerned, that's all, I'm trying to, trying to help.
Yeah, no, no, so, one of the ways that, that we keep on top of things, and we keep on top of technologies, um, first of all, we belong to, um, M S Isaac, which is a multi-state, it's a clearinghouse for, for security issues. Uh, so we get, we get alerts, sometimes multiple times a day. Um, so there's that, and there's also room, or time, I should say, time and, and other resources given to techs during their shift to research, look up things, discover new technologies that we can use, so.
I mean, Paul, you have a great crew, yeah, I'm not.
Oh, I, I have the, I have the best crew, yep.
Your crew is incredible. So I was just trying to look to help, not to.
No, that's, no, I'm glad you asked, thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned. I added what, fifty K? I, 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 I'm, we have really added.
Fifty K, can you beat that, Jerry? Come on, Jerry.
Sure, I'd like to.
Dave, you were in the meeting, come on, what do you got? No, Dave's not, Dave's not playing this game.
I'm waiting, man. No, no, I'm, I'm waiting, because Jerry, you're, you're absolutely right, and Paul is being humble, we spoke about this. Um, Paul cut sixteen thousand dollars from that. Um, and they're saving this year, too, because a lot of the in-person conferences are shut down from COVID.
Which bothers me. That, that bothers me.
So they have, they have savings from this year, but he also, um, cut fif, uh, I'm sorry, sixteen thousand, um, for those same reasons. Um, he, he has done a phenomenal job, him and his crew, and if there's ever a time where we needed I T, um, they've all earned their money this year. So I just wanted to, if I can chip in for a second, Jerry, do you have anything else?
I'll say.
No, but you're, we discussed that. Phenomenal job this year by Paul and his crew, keeping the district alive, um, through this craziness. There's no, there's no book for this. You know, you can't open up a crisis manual and say, you know, COVID crisis, we need to do this and this and this. Our, our district is writing it as they're going. So just a phenomenal job, not only with keeping the district up, but Paul's done a phenomenal job with this budget. We went through line by line by line, he answered every question, he knew everything, uh, where he was able to save, where he had to increase a little bit because he, he's, he's handcuffed by vendors. Couple points besides that I wanna make is, um, with everything going on this year and, and the uncertainty of next year, the summer I T help is imperative, that that, that stays in, especially with capital of a hundred and fourteen laptops and desktops, that, that's very, very important. Also, Paul and his crew did a phenomenal job, they saved the district forty thousand dollars in, uh, getting new copy machines and leases, eliminating local printers, uh, did that, um, in July, and is moving more and more to do that, not only does it save in the toner, but in paper. Uh, and also, uh, he, he talked about Google Classroom, but, uh, everything is electronic now, so the kids do it, it's on, it's there, they don't need to print out as much, so they're not even printing out that much at home. Uh, and, and again, we have savings this year of that because of the, being remote and closed. Uh, we talked about the conferences. Uh, the other thing is capital. You know, it, I saw the laptops, I saw the desktops, they're in bad shape. We keep kicking the can down the road, we can't kick it, you know, we can't keep kicking it. So, um, I, I'm gonna encourage all of us in the town to approve capital. It's not just a, it's not a want for teachers to have a nice new fancy laptop, eight years is, is crazy. I just replaced mine in four and I couldn't work it, so. Um, so I just wanted to thank Paul, Paul and your crew, phenomenal job. Um, you know, these are the guys in the background that are the unsung heroes keeping the district up and running, so just a lot of credit, thank you, and a good job with your budget, Paul.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody have any other questions for Paul, for George?
Yeah, hats off to you, obviously, with the business continuity and, and making sure that, that everybody kept up and running during the whole COVID crisis. You've touched on cyber a little bit, what do you have in place? Do you have something in place in terms of anti-phishing, uh, or do you do campaigns, education? How do you, how do you approach that?
Yeah, we, we've done a couple of things. Number one, one of the things that I did last year was I, I finalized our departmental operational manual. And, and it really lays out, specifies, basically, if this happens, this is our response, this is what we do. Uh, it's a very comprehensive document, as you can imagine, it's actually a binder, it's a thick binder. Um, we, we do quite a few things. Um, all of my technicians have a copy of that binder, it is a secure document. We also run quarterly, we do disaster recovery exercises, also we do tabletop exercises. So twice a year, we alternate quarters. So twice a year, we'll do a disaster recovery exercise, and the other alternating quarters, we do, uh, tabletop exercises where we actually sit down, you know, the, the phones don't get answered for a couple hours, but it's well worth it. Um, and we sit down, we run through cyber scenarios. But all of that means nothing if I still have users clicking on email. Uh, so one of the things that I have done at the beginning of this school year was met with all of the schools, um, virtually, and went over a cybersecurity, uh, presentation on phishing, uh, some of the scams to be aware of, and I'll probably do that again sometime in the spring. So it's really the best line of defense, regardless of how much we drill in I T or the technologies that we put in place, uh, it's really educating the end user to make sure that they don't click emails.
Okay. So any, no additional investment there at this time that's required, you think?
No, what we, last year, we upgraded and replaced our firewalls to, you know, much better technology. Uh, that's helped a lot, we can now download automatically malicious known I P addresses and block them automatically, uh, block our users from, from accessing those I P addresses. Like, for example, um, and I, I equate it to, I've used this term before, it's, it's like a bunch of guys jumping on a grenade. So when we have a spam email go out, our, most of our users are now know, they'll forward it to the help desk, and that immediately triggers a response. First thing we do is we go and look and see, did that email just go to you or did it go to the masses? If it did, if it went to the masses, a couple of things happen. One, an email gets sent out by myself saying spam alert. We also look at the links in the email, we immediately block those outbound from our firewall. That's something we had difficulty doing in the past. So if you get an email from the Prince of Nigeria, and they're gonna give you, you know, ten percent of their, their cut there, if you click on that link, you won't go anywhere now. So that, that's, that's a huge, huge piece in stopping a lot of this ransomware and, um, all these other malware attacks that we get.
Okay. And your infrastructure is, is it cloud or is it on-premise? And your infrastructure is, is it cloud or is it on-premise?
Both.
Okay, so you're hybrid. And did you have any issues with, with people, with the surge in remote work? Does the staff need to, to, you know, access anything but the internet to get to their, their stuff?
Yeah, that's, that is a nice thing about the Google. So with everything, one of the things that we did do is we moved everybody's home directories and shared, departmental shared directories. They used to live on Windows servers, and we put them up into Google. So now, yeah, if you have an internet connection, you can get your stuff.
So you don't, you don't have attacks on your VPN bandwidth or anything like that?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, we don't do any VPN, yeah.
Okay, good.
Wouldn't these computers running Windows 7 obviously will be more susceptible to malware and all sorts of mischief that you were.
Yes, they're, they're absolutely susceptible because they are now end of life. Meaning Microsoft will no longer push patches out to those devices. Where we can't update them automatically. So if there's a known vulnerability that gets discovered on a Windows 7 box, you're, you're out of luck. So it's, it's a huge security risk.
And Alan, those, those laptops with, with the old processors, as Paul was explaining to me, some of them you can't update them to 10 because of hard drives, processors. So it's a, it's a huge safety risk.
Anybody else have anything else? Paul, I think you're done.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So Dan's gonna come up to talk about facilities. Dan is, is actually in the process right now of transitioning on it. Hopefully, you know, as we work through this tonight. I know the budget was created with Bill when, when Bill was still, when Bill was still here. So Danny's kind of jumped in here and really digging into the, digging into the numbers. But, you know, I'm really happy to have Dan on board. He's been around, we, we started visiting the schools to talk about the capital projects coming up. Dan has great knowledge of, of all of the buildings and just a great rapport with all of the, all of the custodians, the head custodians and whatnot. So really look forward to having him on board with us. So I do know, we're kind of putting Dan in a little bit of a tricky spot because he's talking about a budget that he necessarily didn't create. I know he's been doing quite a bit of work, so.
But he went through.
If Jack, Ron and I can jump in wherever possible too, we'll try to help you out, Dan, but.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank.
If you have that, that clicker, you can.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, Dan.
No, all good. I'd also like to thank Mr. Ferris for meeting with me and going through the budget items. These particular line items we're covering tonight are highlighted because they represent the biggest percentage increases to the budget. They were also derived by using a five-year average from 2015 to 2019. Last year was basically thrown away because of COVID. First line items, grounds maintenance, system wide, basically all five buildings, anything to do outside of the buildings, fields, parking lots, that kind of thing, tree removal, grass cutting contracts, all the playground maintenance. So this current year, we're at 99 and we're looking to go to 140. And again, it's gonna be repetitive, but like I said, these numbers are derived by a five-year average of actuals. Next on the list, we have heating repairs, preventative maintenance, you know, same thing. That covers all the rooftop units, exhaust fans, boiler pumps, boilers, anything to do with that. Current year, 92,127, forecasted to be 117,9. And in that current contract amount, we have no, no preventive maintenance going on with that right now. There just wasn't enough money in the budget to fund it. Next item, fire sprinklers, system wide, kind of a smaller number compared to the other ones, but it's just such a big increase, we thought we'd talk about it. Currently 6,800, forecasted to be 12,6. And the big jump increase there is because that 6,800 currently only covers the, the contract to meet state guidelines for the NFPA fire laws. And no repairs come out of that, there's not enough. So the forecasted amount of 12,6 should then cover repairs for that account. Building repairs, system wide, 92,875, 118,6 projected. So many things coming out of that. Gym floor refinishing, large electrical repairs. I know recently we had an upgrade to a transformer at Fawn Hollow. That's the budget line that came out of carpet, tile, roof repairs. And basically the same, same, same problem there. The current number at 92,875 doesn't provide enough for a preventative maintenance contract for our roofs. Next is equipment repairs for vehicles. That takes care of the five, five plow trucks that we have, the plows, the sanders also currently at 14. Need about 19,820 to take care of that. Custodial supplies. That is the only line item that not only was the, did they take a five-year average, but they also added 50% to that. And the reason why is COVID. Huge amount of custodial supplies, obviously, we're going through at this time, and also for future PPE. So 82,790 this year, 138,300 next year. And the last item is equipment, equipment non-instructional. It's, it's really just small equipment replacement, leaf blowers, salt spreaders, weed whackers, chainsaws, that kind of thing. Currently at 48,57, and going with the five-year average of the actuals up to 10. And that's basically it.
Dan, can you just go back a slide?
Sure.
Just hit that other arrow.
Yeah.
A couple of things. First of all, in all, the area that we really, last year, when we were facing the deficit during the year, we gutted, we gutted facilities, we gutted Bill's, Bill's lines to take care of the issue that we were living in 1920 and then as we, you know, dealt with the reductions that we had to deal with this year. So this budget that, that Ron and Jack and Bill and Dan have kind of put together, kind of restores that. And that's why I said, I think during the executive summary, is that we needed to start to get some of this stuff put back in. That 138,000, that's really the only line, that third line down, that 138,000, that's pretty much the only line where we account for any COVID kind of supplies in our, in our whole budget. That, that's the, that's the only spot, just no supplies there.
Right.
Wait, Joe, that's the only line in the entire budget that we're accounting for any kind of EPE at all?
Yep, yep. For next year.
I understand.
Again, one of the assumptions of the budget was that we'd be living in a post-COVID world, and if we're not.
Okay, but don't mind, just like, Jack, but Jack, what have we spent so far this year, if you had to guess? Well, I know. Jack set up the order. Okay, so that was my, I was just trying to support again.
Absolutely.
Just trying to support. We've got 200 easy, and we've got 55,000 because, and it's just not, is that just for EPE?
No, that whole.
That's what I'm trying to, okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood.
It goes to, it goes back to what we were saying, like, this whole budget is based on a full in-person learning school year, right?
Yeah, a normal year.
A nor, a normal year, which may or may not happen, you know? So it, you know, you have to say, you have to do something. I just think it's really important that we're gonna have like our backup teams, where we're, like, right at a full distance, where, you know, I don't know how much I was spending on PPE in the, and, you know, we're not as much as that for example. Like, it's just, it's just gonna, like, everybody, I guess.
I, I agree with you.
So for, I guess, you know, you have to look at apples to apples, if this person's for a full in-person year.
Right.
Yeah, the, the thought process was it's a post-COVID world, but you're still gonna have increased cleaning supplies.
Post-COVID or not, you're gonna have to clean.
Absolutely.
Post-COVID or not.
And probably increased.
You're gonna have to.
Yeah, sure. Even if it's full in-person, that's a good point, even if it's full in-person, we're gonna need.
Habits of change.
Habits of change, yes.
No more, but after November, they take, probably ever.
Well, what are they saying, that you'll be wearing masks for at least another two years?
That's what they claim, yeah.
You know, so you have to even think that even in your post-COVID world, we may be still needing to, may have masks on hands and other stuff.
Well, I'm thinking of replacement of the plexiglass shields. Why? Well, it's plexiglass, it breaks.
Right.
And it's plexi, it's not made out of bulletproof. So I'm just thinking of, you know, the shields that we have and replacing them, yeah.
Right.
I, I was just, sorry, I was just trying to add.
No, appreciate it.
And I think it's important to say, our post-COVID world is not going to be the world we knew two years ago. The post-COVID world is going to be our new normal.
I agree.
And to add to Joe's point, if you look at your cuts from last year, this is a place where.
We cut heavy.
Oh, destroyed.
And I think we did that in part to save people. We set down.
Absolutely.
But now equipment's gonna suffer. See, that's, you know, that's, that's the equal and balance. I mean, if you don't repair that machine, eventually it goes. And I've been a jackass long enough to know that when that elevator shaft goes, my God, it costs us thousands of dollars, but we needed the elevator because of the handicap. I mean, and it's just this whole trickle-down effect.
And when you don't do preventative maintenance, then all of a sudden, the repair is much more expensive than it would have been if you had just done your maintenance on it.
Exactly.
Guys, to your, to your point, that last line item there that Dan has asked to go to 10,000, that used to be 14,000. So we're still not back up to where it used to be. So I just wanted to, again, Dan, thank you. We got kind of thrown into the budget process in the middle of, of a transition. But he's been with the district for a while, knows the schools very, very well. I asked him a question, he knew it. Jack and Ron, thanks for your help with this too. If I can just go through a couple of things from our discussion. One of the things that the custodians did for us here, here in system wide is during our closure and shutdown, is they, they picked up the pace. For example, they did extra things that they don't normally do. They saved us thousands of dollars by mowing lawns, doing landscaping, so we didn't have to pay vendors. So we have savings this year from vendors with that. Dan and I had a, we talked a lot about vendors and going out to RFP to look at costs and maintenance plans versus waiting until it, till it breaks. And Dan got back to me with a lot of the questions I had about fire alarms and, you know, when do we go out to RFP and all that. Dan also did a very good job in securing our, our disposal contract, getting that vendor to do no increase, right, Dan?
Yeah, there's a, yep.
Yep, so he's, he's holding the prices there. You know, I, I asked him off the top of his head if, if we gave him a million dollars, could he spend it? And he said probably in about an hour. Roofs, paving, Monroe Hill is an, is an older school, the Masick elevator, $80,000. I mean, he's got a list off the top of his head of things that, that need to be done. So I want to give credit where credit is due as well. The alarm system. In, in his budget detail, under building, excuse me, building repair system wide, that 118,6. Ladies and gentlemen, repairs and maintenance have been put off in fiscal year 18, 19, and 20. Repair and maintenance have been put off in FY 18, 19, and 20. So the last time they did work on that was '17. Dan also, with Ron's help, I know last year from Bill, remember hearing about the floor machines? How they were Franken-signing all of those too? They were able to get one through CARES Act, COVID money, very valid because it has to do with cleaning. So thanks for being creative with that, very helpful to get that floor machine in there. He is working on a capital plan so that we will get that capital plan to address septic systems, vehicles, all that that we've seen in the past. I asked him to show us that as well, septic tanks, oil tanks, all of that. So that'll be coming to us. I had a lot of notes, but I just wanted to let you, let you know about some highlights. So it's, it's huge increases, but we understand why, and it's needed. Again, there's, there's not, there's not fluffing here, there's not wants in here. These are, these are needs, we went through every line item. So Dan, thank you and thanks for your whole crew, because if the schools weren't clean and safe, then the, the rest of our mission goes down the tube, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I have one question. It's your budget, talking about your budget in the out years, now beyond 2022, you know, I was just doing a little math over here, as I want to do, and, you know, except for K3 and 4, this year, based off of the alonomic room that we handed out, every other grade level is above a high projection. Second grade this year, this year, is 16 above alonomic room's highest projection based off a year ago. Now, I know a year ago is.
That's pretty COVID.
A thousand years ago, but if these, if people who are moving in, the kids are here to stay and their body wants to stay for a while, these are just gonna keep growing. And if there's more people in the buildings, so it's gonna just be more use.
Yeah? Anybody have anything else? For Dan? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. So it doesn't look like we'll have a Wednesday session, you know, because of the snow, I don't think Jerry can come out.
Yeah, I got the plow on, honey. I'm, I'm already on.
I think we're, I think we should be okay to miss Wednesday. I mean, we'll pick this up on Monday.
You know, if it doesn't snow, I'll be yelled at, you know.
We'll pick it up on Monday. Where does everybody want to go? Is everybody want to go to the line-by-line staffing pages? Where, where do we want to move to?
I don't know about line-by-line, but I think, I think salary staffing, we just need to have a, a general discussion because I did, I did have some questions on some things, a lot of which are being answered through the Q&amp;A doc, which is helpful. But I think that's our biggest, biggest expense is labor and benefits, so I think we have to.
All right, so then let's, let's plan for next Monday during our regular board meeting, because we've always done that. We've always, you know, not made, they've made the agenda pretty light so that we could cover, you know, the budget. We will talk about salary and benefits section. And now, every, we would have, we, just to remind everybody, those were, those were emailed out to us, that big document. Right, is that the one you want to go to or through here? Because the one that we were emailed is really the detail of that, what, thousand-plus pages, Ron?
Yeah, you, you've got the details. That's, that's the same one, that's the budget detail.
Oh, okay, it's the same one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's section four?
Yep, I got it. Because I pulled it up on my computer, from what you guys emailed, so that's easier.
Are those the last two that we have to go through?
What, I'm sorry?
Are those the last two we have to go through as far as budget?
Capital plan we're gonna do in, probably in the beginning of January. We're going around, Jack, Ron, Dan and I went to Jackie Hollow today and to Masick today. We're gonna, I think we have a couple tomorrow, we're gonna hit the elementary schools this week. we have a couple tomorrow. We're going to hit the elementary schools this week and start putting it together.
When do we have to submit our budget?
I was just getting to that. So we're going to vote on the budget on January 19th.
Needs to be submitted by the 23rd.
Right. So we have until the 19th. So we will have this budget discussion next Monday, which is the 21st. Then we will finish up on the 4th and the 19th, and any other necessary day we would need to have. But definitely, we would cover it the 21st, January 4th, and January 19th.
Yeah. If we could keep up the agenda, like, on other things that focus concerning this, we could maybe still, I'm certain we got a lot to do.
And I'm sure that there will be some things to change. Like, we have not received, we've only received, what, two retirements?
Two retirements so far.
That usually does affect some of our.
Actually, Joe, I was going to ask you, sorry, I was, you reminded me, I was going to ask you about that. Because with retirements, I know it's not huge savings, but there will be savings by, by moving around, right? So we have to reflect that in those positions?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. We'd have to reallocate and whatnot. You're right. The first year, there's not huge savings because this is a retirement year. So if someone's been around for a while, they're going to get the $10,000 plus, plus the.
But I'm saying the new person that comes in at the bottom is at a much lower salary and benefit rate, man.
Right. So that, so we will have changes going into January. Because we may not even, because contractually, they don't have to let us know until December 31st.
Right.
So we may not.
We even postponed that. We planned in that, in the past to try to.
Absolutely.
In time.
So you know how the net savings for the, for the interns is 6,000 or something?
Per school.
Right, per school.
Per school. For, we can't even get subs in our post-COVID world, right? We keep having subs.
We have, we have a sub fair scheduled for this Wednesday, too. Another.
And people are just not clamoring to be subs in this, in this day and age.
I agree. I agree with you.
That's like another angle of like, like, do you have trouble when we're in having enough subs?
I mean, right now, we are because of, you know, the quarantine. I mean, that, that was a big reason why we went out was, was just staffing reasons. We had, so, yeah, every town is having just majors. There's just so many, you know. One teacher at Jackie Hollow ended up, you know, resulting in quarantining of, you know, a whole department and a whole, and a whole team. You know, that was just, that was just one, one person.
Joe, can I ask a favor? Sheila? Sheila, for next meeting, could you do us a favor and cost the hard to figure, do you have the exact number, do you have the exact number 16 and 15 or?
One is 16, one is 16.5, but I think we found that.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, I mean, that, that would help. Well, for me, that would help a lot.
You guys need to see if any students watching our program, maybe.
Well, that's true.
You're talking for next year.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, if you're a teacher at program and you see COVID and, you know, I wouldn't have thought this.
We're a statistic bunch. There will be people in the program.
I mean, the other assumption we have going into this that's going to be unknown is, is health insurance. I mean, we've budgeted for it, you know, where they suggested that we budget. And I think it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty safe number. It'd be nice if it, if it came in lower. We budgeted at 10%.
We budgeted at 10%, but rumor is, again, in the high sixes or sevens, I cannot confirm.
But there's a county factor.
But there's the county kicking.
Supposed to include the county kicker prepared for county.
That would be nice.
That would be nice, yeah.
Right. But that, but as we've known in the past, like, that's some, that sometimes doesn't get kicked in until it gets to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, it's not.
So there's still changes that occur. So the budget that we submit, there may still be some small changes that are occurring all the way up until April.
There, there will be definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know in the budget, it probably means you said last meeting that the medical council is not net employee contributions in the budget.
In the budget?
No, the year-to-date.
In our year-to-date this year.
Report, yes. The, the encumbrance.
Correct.
Yes.
So how, how will we know how we're tracking? I mean, I remember, we used to get like every month that charge.
Do you want me to give you an update on? I can, I can provide that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, claims is different.
We're not self-insured.
We're not self-insured anymore.
Just to see where we are.
Got you. But there's not a liability for us. That's why I want to make sure you guys, it's not like it was in the past.
Right. Right. Because they, they encumbered the expenses, but they didn't encumber the, let's call it reduction of the employee contribution. So all it's going to do is really go down. It's at the highest it can be, and it's just going to go down once the staff pays their, their share of the contributions.
Monday's meeting is at what time, Adam Scher?
7:30. It would be a normal board event meeting with a light agenda, which will do budget, and we will do section four, which will be the salaries.
Got it.
And then we will decide from there what we still need to cover and what we want to go back to and look at. Does anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jerry. A second. Thank you, Shannon. All in favor? Great. Thank you so much.